Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm going to call to order the February 7th, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and I'm going to ask our Treasurer, Jason Salas, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple of opening comments. First, you may remember that as part of our engagement and public education around the opioid overdose epidemic, every year we reach out to our high school students and ask them to design a billboard that would be displayed on our Montgomery County billboard system for several months, and the goal of the billboard is to help raise awareness about the opioid overdose epidemic. So this year, we have gotten some really incredible entries into the contest, and now it is open for the public to vote. So we want to encourage everybody to vote on their favorite billboard, and by favorite, I mean the one that you think would have the most impact, that would connect with students and members of the public. You can vote at a link that can be found on our county homepage, so macopia.org. Go to there, and you'll see a box that talks about voting for the billboard, and you can easily get to the page. Take, have five or 10 minutes to do it, because I'll tell you, it's a pretty tough choice. There's some amazing pieces of art that have been submitted this year for consideration. And then, once we have a winner, we will do a public presentation here at one of our future meetings. Secondly, I just want to acknowledge how unpredictable the weather has been this season. It's been like spring out there now, and, you know, ice and snow and everything in between, incredible cold. And I want to thank our Department of Assets and Infrastructure's Public Property Team for keeping our county-owned properties clear. It's been a lot of work, a lot of work on evenings and weekends, and so just want to acknowledge the fact that they are out there working hard when many times the rest of us are safe and warm in our houses. They keep our roads safe, they keep our sidewalks clear here at our county seat, and it can be some really tough work, particularly this winter, so I just want to thank them. I also want to thank the Department of Public Safety for providing constant updates to the Commissioners and to the public. They also disseminate a lot of very useful information about weather preparedness, and all of it's extremely useful. So if you are not signed up for our Ready Maco Alerts, I would encourage you to do that as well. You can go to readymaco.org, and you can sign up, you can say where you live. If you have relatives in another part of the county, you can sign up to get alerts for that part of the county. You can even sign up for alerts for almost all of our surrounding counties, if you have relatives that live there. And you just get tailored alerts when something is going on in your area. So that is readymaco.org, and really encourage everyone to sign up for that. And then finally, the cold has really been extreme this year, and we do have a number of Code Blue shelters that open up during those times, and we are so grateful for that community support to help those who are experiencing homelessness. But if you do see someone in your travels that is on the street and appears to be experiencing homelessness, you can simply call 211. 211, that's the connection to your way home, and you can just report where that person is located, and they will try to get a street outreach team to see if they can help that person get into shelter. So I just want you to know that those resources are there during this kind of crazy winter weather that we've been experiencing. Commissioner Ochs?
On January 24th, I volunteered with Commissioner Arkush and about 45 other volunteers throughout the county for the point-in-time count, and I see that Emma is here. Your Way Home led that. There were five catchment areas in Montgomery County: Sheltonham, Willow Grove, Abington, Norristown in Bridgeport, Pottstown, Royersford, Ardmore, Lower Marion, and Lansdale, Salverton. And what the point-in-time count is, is it's the one night the federal government mandates that we go out and try to count homeless on the streets and survey them. We found 19 unsheltered individuals that night, and we're still working to get them into the system. I will say that while I was aware that homelessness exists in Montgomery County, to actually see people sleeping on playgrounds and under bridges was very powerful, and I remain committed as a Commissioner to doing all that we can to end homelessness here in Montgomery County.
I have opening comments as well. Everyone here knows that I oppose the 2019 county budget, and since then, there's been further developments that further reinforce my opposition to the budget, and I voted no on the budget for two reasons. One was the excessive cost of the county campus construction project, which is now $406 million in the budget, and the fact that I did not receive a guaranteed commitment from my colleagues on the board that there would not be a project labor agreement implemented for the construction of the new Justice Center across the street. Last week, a union boss named John Doherty has faced indictment charges, and it further reinforces why I'm opposed to a project labor agreement. It's not that I'm anti-union workers. The men and women on the job sites doing physically demanding labor and trades are working hard, paying their union dues. It's the fat cat union bosses that sit behind the desk and collect those union dues and play politics with it and abuse their power and use it to soften rich themselves is where I have a major problem. And we just saw it recently with a Philadelphia union boss. And it's not only Democrats, it's Republicans too. Democrats, I know my colleagues have received thousands and thousands of dollars from unions and campaign contributions. Republicans have as well, especially here in Montgomery County. I'd like to point one out. One is former State Senator John Rafferty. Former State Senator John Rafferty lost his election in November, but over his term in the State Senate from 2002 to, now he's gone, to current day, he received over $500,000 in union contributions. As recently as this past October, October 27, 2018, received a $25,000 check from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 98. The boss of that union is John Doherty. $25,000 check. Over the years, $20,000 check from Local 98 IVW. $5,000 check. Big checks. They send these checks to influence elected officials on decision-making. Everyone knows that's how it works, that's how it works, okay? And I think it's ironic that it's called a brotherhood. They call each other brothers, they're supposed to look out at one another, but they're self-servants. Time and time again, you see them self-serving themselves and their cronies at the expense of hard-working men and women on job sites. They abuse their power. And elected officials take the contributions and play politics with it and cater to their campaign donors. Everyone watching this meeting knows that's how it works, okay? And this, I even received a letter, I know my colleagues did too, from the same union where the union boss is facing indictment charges, Local Union 98, encouraging me to implement a project labor agreement for the construction of the Justice Center. Why do you think Bob Casey, our U.S. Senator, sent me a letter? Because he receives thousands and thousands of donations from the unions. Why do you think Governor Wolf sent me a letter? Same reason. And the way it works is the union boss picks up the phone and says, "You remember that $25,000 check I gave you on October 27th? Well, you owe me." And that's called pay-to-play politics. And the public knows that's politics as usual, that's how business is done, and they're tired of it, that's why I was elected, that's why I'll be re-elected this year. People are fed up with it, and it's an endless cycle of corruption and scandal every time you open a newspaper, every time you turn on a television, and a lot of it's right here in southeastern Pennsylvania. And what I've come to learn as Commissioner is, many times, it's not about conservatism ideology and liberalism ideology, it's a business. And the Republican Party bosses are best friends with the Democrat Party bosses, and they collude to have power. And everyone knows that's how it works. I disrupt that system, and that's why I have a lot of public support, and I'm going to continue to be outspoken and shine a spotlight on it. There's an endless cycle of collusion, establishment collusion in Montgomery County. You have a long history of it here. You can look at the former Commerce Director of the county, whose husband is the Republican GOP Party Chairman for the state of Pennsylvania. So why would a Democrat administration hire the Republican Party, State Party boss's wife as the Commerce Director of the county? It's establishment collusion. It's not in the spirit of bipartisanship and credentials, it's establishment collusion. That's why you see the former Republican Committee Chairman, Mike Verb, a former state representative, working for a Democrat Attorney General, Josh Shapiro, created a job that never existed before in the Attorney General's office, six-figure salary, and hires the former Republican boss from Montgomery County. Not because of his credentials, there's a lot of people in this Commonwealth, it's because it's establishment collusion, and people are tired of it. And I have a big target on my back. Both party establishments want me out of office because I have a reputation of calling it out, and that's why I have public support, and I'm not going to stop. And it's scandal after scandal, whether it's the former Attorney General for the Commonwealth, Kathleen Cain, who was prosecuted in our courthouse across the street, spent time in our county correctional facility, whether it's our former Montgomery County Republican Committee Chair, Bob Kearns, who drugged and raped an employee of his, now he's a registered sex offender, whether it's perverts like former Republican Congressman Pat Mayon or State Senator Daylon Leach, a Democrat, both sides, a lot of corruption and scandal, never-ending, whether it's former Congressman Chaka Fatah, arrested in prison, whether it's the former District Attorney in Philadelphia, Steph Williams, another one, arrested, it's never-ending, and all of it's in our backyard. And to implement a project labor agreement when we know for a fact it increased costs of construction by approximately 20 percent, it excludes approximately 85 percent of the construction industry bidding on the construction work, when we already have a very, very difficult time procuring bids on these construction work projects, it's wrong. It's a scandal in itself. So I encourage my colleagues to think twice, because they still have not been clear and stated where they stand on implementing a project labor agreement for the newly constructed Justice Center. So I highly consider you to investigate this. Yesterday, we toured businesses in Pottstown. One of them was a newly formed electrical company. You heard it firsthand from the business community that it hurts their businesses, a project labor agreement. I received numerous phone calls, letters from the public that agree with my stance. It's the fat cat union bosses behind the desk that collected dues of hard-working men and women on job sites and played politics with it and then become indicted that won it. And it's also the elected officials that get those $25,000 checks, the $5,000 checks, the $20,000 checks, that are their puppet on a string. And that's why you get letters to support it. They don't care about the taxpayers, they play politics with the taxpayers' money time and time again, and this is a new development that reinforces my opposition to the project labor agreement, reinforces why I oppose the county budget, and moving forward, I highly encourage my colleagues to give that sincere consideration. And that concludes my comments.
Commissioner Gail's trying to film a campaign commercial here today. All right, we will move on to approval of minutes.
Probably be a good commercial.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 17th, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence. I will second. Any board comment? Move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Mr. Bonner, there's a little activity going on in the back of the building. We thought we should share with the public what's happening back there.
Yes, indeed. So yes, not a small amount of activity going on in the back of the building, Commissioners and Solicitor and Chief Clerk. As we approach the end of Phase 1, I just wanted to provide an update to you and certainly our county staff team and the public about where the project's been going to understand what's been happening outside while we on the inside certainly hear, feel, and see what's going on from our perspective. I'll start, before we even move anywhere forward, with the fact that the county staff, my colleagues, have been exceptionally accommodating, I'll come back to that. Our construction team has worked with professionals and to move the project along according to the plan, and so on balance, we are certainly in good shape as far as the overall project goes. I do want to specifically, though, show exactly sort of what we've been doing. So Phase 0 was complete in fall of 2018. This included enabling work, and I'm just including some pictures of examples of this. We installed temporary electricity throughout the building to support the infrastructure that the construction team needs, in addition to heat and items on the inside of the building. We replaced the windows on the top floor, you'll see that if you're up there, or if you are looking the outside of the building, it looks eminently clearer. We built a parking garage where a hair salon used to be in the park, excuse me, we built a security booth in the parking garage where a hair salon used to be, which will be used as we move forward throughout securing the garage and the building in general. And we demolished the quote "bridge between," which actually was not a bridge between, was an actually emergency exit, but this is now gone to facilitate the rest of the project. Again, Phase 0 was complete in fall 2018. Just as a reminder, Phase 1 is, as Commissioner Arkush has indicated, underway. We are planning, the planning completion date for Phase 1 is the end of March 2019. This diagram simply goes to show what exactly Phase 1 is, what Phase 2 is, and as we move around the building. What happened in Phase 1, or what is happening? So this was the building. I feel like it's important to emphasize the fact that this is/was, this is no longer what this building looks like, and will never look like that again. First step is obviously that we took the outside off of the building. The construction team literally demolished the brick coverings for all the steel columns. You see what's left of the glass windows at the bottom, all of that has been removed. We built a temp wall on the inside of the building, six feet in from the outside, which those of us in the offices in the perimeter of the building can certainly tell you, is a very clean white space from the inside. From the outside, it's a steel stud construction with insulation board outside to prevent, to the extent it's possible.
Maybe the word "prevent" isn't the best choice.
Mitigate the infiltration of air. I, we'll come back to that, but I do think, you know, we have learned a lot, this job has not been perfect, but this is the construction, if you were on the outside of the building, that's what it looks like. Going around, these huge support cranes that go up, referred to in the construction industry as mass climbers, helped to remove all of the material on the outside of the building, and so you are left with what you see here. The discerning eye will of course see that the picture on the left has red steel columns, and the picture on the right has yellow coverings. That is part of the project that is certainly unglamorous, but a very important detail to act to the future sustainability of this building. That's insulation that goes along the entire outside of the building. That, coupled with the glass, coupled with the aluminum panels that form the facade, is literally the point of the project to prevent water and air infiltration from the outside. The panelization system, and this is a credit to both the design team and the construction team, and then the planning that's been going on for the better part of two years, the reason that this project has been able to progress in the way that it has is because the system is what would be called panelized. That crane lifts pre-assembled sections on, and then laborers attach it to the outside of the building. This is of course opposed to building everything in place in pieces. As you see, this has gone up as Phase 1 has progressed, having started in November. We have moved through the outside of the building. Glass has then gone in, the glass windows that have gone in on the 10th floor will be similar to the ones that go on throughout the building. Here, you can simply see the detail that the curtain wall that's on the left, where the elevation area, the mass climber elevator is in front of, that will be around sort of the middle of the building, between the two sections. Every single window in this building will be replaced. So again, back to what our building used to look like, and today, we are looking at this from the outside. By the end of March, that whole side will be complete. I did want to come back quickly, because while the project, and I can speak directly to the quality of the work on the construction management and the construction contractor and the design side, it would be remiss not to mention the fact that this project would not be able to go forward without the work of both my colleagues and our staff on the inside. And that means everybody from domestic relations, who has had to move people around, who has had to change the location of hearings, who has had to reschedule things, to register of wills, who had to move some of their books around, and some of them got wet during a, you know, all of, we, this is a collective effort. And so I did want to acknowledge the fact that we have proceeded very smoothly considering how complex this project has been. Departments have gone beyond, above and beyond many times where we scheduled moves, so moving furniture in and out, we got there only to find that departments had already moved themselves out, and so we were able to move through and move in schedule faster. Security, our security team in the front lobby, our public property team that has helped to fill the spaces between as we need something moved, or we need something changed, or we need somebody's background badge fixed, and there has been a lot of work around the elevators. I can't stress enough how a collective effort this has been. We're not done. We're not even done with Phase 1, and we have certainly a large amount of work to go before we close that out. Phase 2 starts in April and does do the Penn Street side of the building, and the overall project completion is still on schedule for 2020. And we keep reminding people that there is a light at the end of the tunnel after the noise and the air. So, as I said, we are moving according to plan, and I can't stress enough how the county itself, the departments, have come together to really help this project move forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I want to just express my thanks too to everybody. It's been very inconvenient, it's been cold, it's been hot, but it will be so worth it when it's done, and I'm in Phase 2, so I'm looking forward to it. It'll be an interesting experience, I'm sure. And I also just want to reiterate something you mentioned to us the other day, which that there's been happily no injuries or other problems on the job, given the people that are up and down, you know, literally on the outside of the building, very high up. Just want to commend the entire workforce that's here on their attention to safety, and obviously, we don't want anyone to get hurt. And it's also my understanding that the project remains on budget, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Great.
And I, just to piggyback on your comment about safety, the team has been exceptionally committed to project safety, especially given, as you saw some of those pictures, you are on the outside of the building, 10 stories above, and so it has been certainly a well-followed plan, let's put it that way.
Thank you, Tom, for the update, and you're very good at giving other people credit and sharing it, but I know that you're herding cats and juggling bowling balls and everything else 24/7 on this, so thank you for your personal attention to this.
Well, thank you. I would reiterate, though, this would be absolutely impossible without the help of everybody else, but I appreciate that.
Appreciate the update, Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Stein, you have an ordinance for our consideration?
I do. For you today is an ordinance which would amend the hotel occupancy tax. Late last year, the General Assembly passed a bill, and the governor signed it to law, became Act 109, which amends the way that hotel occupancy taxes are collected and remitted. The hotel occupancy tax law goes back a few decades. Ours in Montgomery County was originally adopted in 1983. Back then, no one had any ideas of anything like Travelocity, Airbnb, Booking.com, things like that. What Act 109 does is levels the playing field, because whereas hotels are required to pay the tax on the amounts paid to them, online booking agencies have not had to pay that. This levels the playing field and requires that all of the entities that are collecting money off of bookings are paying that to the counties and municipalities.
Thank you. Is there a motion that the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners hereby adopt the hotel room rental tax ordinance as described by Mr. Stein, bringing the county's hotel occupancy tax into conformity with Pennsylvania Act 109 of 2018, clarifying how state and local hotel occupancy taxes are to be levied, collected, and remitted by booking agents and other entities which operate online?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Any, no? Okay, great. All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Stein, a lease extension.
Yes, the first one is for the district court in Bridgeport. This one expired at the end of last year. The county's seeking to do a three-year extension, which will lead to about $31,800 in savings, an annual rent of about $65,600 annually.
Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into a lease extension agreement with GLTK Partners for a three-year period for the purpose of housing District Court 38-1-25 in Bridgeport with an annual rent of $65,664 for the first year and a 2% increase each year thereafter?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And second lease.
Yes, this is another district court lease extension. This one is for Red Hill. It does not expire until April 30th of 2020, however, the landlord has offered us a 10-year extension, which would lead to $115,000 worth of savings over the life of that lease.
Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into a lease extension agreement with GNT Partners for a 10-year period for the purpose of housing District Court 38-1-20, oh, wait, I've got the wrong language, I've got the Bridgeport language on this one.
Apologies.
Because it's not 38-1-25, right?
No, you're correct, that is, it's supposed to be 38-2-02.
Okay, 2-02 in Red Hill, correct?
Correct.
All right, so the rest of it's correct, though?
The rest, yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm just going to start over. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into a lease extension agreement with GNT Partners?
With GNT Partners.
Okay. For a 10-year period for the purpose of housing District Court 38-2-02 in Red Hill, with an annual rent of $86,808 for the first year and a 2% increase each year thereafter?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gail.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Stein, I just want to comment that it's really encouraging to hear about the savings that this lease will bring. We've been, and folks, some of the folks may remember, we've been on sort of a long process to look at our district courts and do a couple of things, consolidate them where it makes sense to do that, in the act of doing that, making sure that they're more convenient for people to get to, post a couple of transportation, things like that. Consolidation often brings on some additional safety and other economies of scale for those courts. In some cases, in smaller communities, there's really not an opportunity for consolidation, but we are looking for the most cost-effective ways to maintain these leases, and that's a, that's a big number, 100, over $100,000.
Very good savings.
Yeah, that's great to hear, thank you. Any other board comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we have a number of appointments and reappointments to various boards and commissions, so bear with me. We are going to start with the Montgomery County Parks and Heritage Services Advisory Board. Is there a motion that Mary Lou McFarland be appointed to the Montgomery County Parks and Heritage Services Advisory Board and that Don Orkut and Carl Kelman be reappointed to the same, each for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2022, and each serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the Montgomery County Soil Conservation District. Is there a motion to reappoint the following individuals to the Board of Directors for the Montgomery County Conservation District, Andrew Frankenfeld as the farmer director, Monica Burkett, and Timothy Woodrow as the public directors, each serving for a term beginning January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2002, and Commissioner Valerie Arkush for a term beginning January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2019, each serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the state conservation district law. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall supersede and replace Resolution 19-C07 adopted January 17th, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment?
Thank you for your service.
And, you're welcome. Any public comment? Actually, I will add that there's a difference, because the commissioners can only be appointed for one-year terms, the other directors are appointed for multi-year terms, that's why there's a difference in those lengths, and that's by statute. Any public comment? No. All right, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Onto the libraries. Is there a motion that Jules DeLuzio be appointed to the Montgomery County Is there a motion that Jules DeLuzio be appointed to the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library for a term to begin immediately and to expire on December 31, 2021, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. The Montgomery County Workforce Development Board. Is there a motion that Imad Abdulnabi be appointed to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board and that Mary Beth Ferguson be appointed to the board as the Commonwealth's designated one-stop partner, replacing James Nichols in that role? Each appointment shall serve terms that begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022, and each serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Our Drug and Alcohol Planning Council. Is there a motion that Sarah Whitman be appointed as the under-25 representative to the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to begin immediately and to expire on December 31, 2021, and serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have the Montgomery County Citizen Advisory Committee of the Office of Children and Youth. Is there a motion that Sharon Jones-Hafer be appointed to the Montgomery County Citizen Advisory Committee for the Office of Children and Youth for a term to begin immediately and expiring on December 31, 2022, and serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Early Intervention Board. Is there a motion to appoint Janice Nuss to the Montgomery County Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Board for a term that begins immediately and expiring on December 31, 2021, serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the Mental Health and Intellectual Disability Act of 1996 and the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And finally, our Local Emergency Planning Committee Board. Is there a motion to appoint George Dula to serve as the local first aid representative to the Montgomery County Local Emergency Planning Committee for a term to begin immediately and to expire on December 31, 2020, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Lawrence. Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Advertisement of RFPs, Mr. Soltizziak.
Yes, we have two announcements or advertisements this morning. The first is an RFP on behalf of the Workforce Development Board for a consultant to develop and host online content for the Monco Works program. The successful provider will develop and facilitate a menu of creative workshops for job seekers through an online platform. A contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. And the second is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for psychiatric rehabilitation services. The services will provide for support to individuals with mental illness and skill-building, achieving, and maintaining goals in various life domains, including employment, education, and independent living. The contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. And as a reminder, all bids and RFPs are available on the county's public purchase website, moncopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding request for an advertisement of RFPs as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltizziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence.
Any board comment? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract.
Yes, we have 14 items this morning. The first is a contract renewal for public safety. The award goes to wireless, I'm sorry, Verizon Wireless in the amount of $44,932. Services provide connectivity for mobile data computers to the 911 system. Contract is valid for a term of 1 from 1-1-2019 to 12-31-19, and the services are available through a GSA-S-S contract. Number two is a contract renewal for finance, for financial services. The award goes to PFM Group, and the contract provides for financial advising services for the county. This is for the second of three available annual renewals. Number three is a contract award for the District Attorney's Office and the Office of Children and Youth for forensic interviewing services. The award goes to Child Advocacy Center of Montgomery County in the amount of $375,000. Contract provides for forensic interviewing services of juveniles and victim advocacy. The contract is valid for a period of 1-1-2019 to 12-31-2019, and allows for one remaining optional annual renewal. Number four is a contract renewal for the Youth Center for Food Service. The award goes to the U.S. Food Service of Philadelphia in the amount of $115,000. The contract provides for the purchase of food products for the Youth Center Food Services Division. Contract is available through a tri-state food services group cooperative, and the contract term is from 7-1-2019 through 6-30-2020. Number five is a contract award for public safety for an HVAC upgrade. The award goes to Tozor Automation in the amount of $22,077. The contract provides for the installation of a new HVAC unit for the main building and the public safety training campus. Services are available through a U.S. Communities Cooperative contract. Number six is an award for the sheriff for equipment and software. The award goes to Axon Enterprise, Inc., in the amount of $71,000. Contract provides for 30 body cams with evidence storage software for a period of one year. The equipment is available from the National IPA Cooperative contract. Number seven is a contract award for the coroner for equipment. The award goes to VWR International LLC in the amount of $37,568. The contract provides for an equipment upgrade to the morgue, cooler, and freezer area, which will provide for greater storage capacity. The equipment is available from a PA State contract. Number eight is a contract award for the, for APO, for a vehicle. The award goes to Whitmore Auto Group in the amount of $27,950. The contract provides for a 2019 Ford Explorer for the Adult Probation Department for offender visitations and offender transportation by parole officers. The vehicle is available from a PA CoStarz contract. Number nine is a contract award for the sheriff's office for vehicles also. The award goes to Whitmore Auto Group in the amount of $168,900. The contract provides for two 2019 Ford Police Interceptor SUVs and two 2019 Ford 15-passenger transport vans. The vehicles are available from a CoStarz contract. The contract award number 10 is for the Planning Commission for Household Hazardous Waste Collection. The award goes to MXI Environmental Services LLC in the amount of five, I'm sorry, $455,000. The, an RFP was issued by Philadelphia on behalf of Bucks, Jester, Delaware, and Montgomery Counties. The contract is, provides hazardous household waste collection events throughout the county and for the proposed, per the proposed cost schedule. My apologies. Contract awarded for the period of 1-1-2019 through 12-31-2019 with three optional annual renewals. Number 11 is a contract award for APO, for monitoring services. The award goes to American Monitoring Services Corporation in the amount of $250,000. The contract provides for continuous signal electronic offender monitoring services. The RFP was viewed by 16 providers with three responses received. The contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. The contract is from May 1, 2019 through April 30, 2021, with two optional annual renewals. Number 12 is a contract amendment for the Planning Commission for Engineering. The award goes to RK&amp;K. The contract provides for design services for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project between Harmon Avenue in Plymouth Township and Crescent Avenue in White Marsh Township. The amendment provides for a no-cost time extension through 9/25/2020 that will allow the completion of the preliminary design for the project. Number 13 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for engineering. The award goes to Bergman Associates, Inc., in the amount of $14,799.75. The contract provides for an engineering firm to perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the replacement of County Bridge Number 163 Lutheran Road over Minister Creek in New Hanover Township. The amendment provides for archaeological site review required by the PA State Historic Preservation Office. Number 14, there are 10 contract renewals for Health and Human Services. The list of providers and services are on a list in the back of the room. And for the task force, there are four items. There, the first is an award for equipment. The, for, the award goes to Techline Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $24,790.75. The contract provides for major incident response team tech line trauma kits for the city of Philadelphia. The provider is the sole manufacturer of these kits. Number two is a contract renewal for smart system sustainment. The award goes to Hospital and Health System Association of Pennsylvania in the amount of $150,000. The contract provides for enhanced regional medical surge capacity through the Surge Medical Advanced Response Team. Due to the specialized nature of the work, single procurement was approved by PMA and the PA Department of General Services. The contract term is from 9/1/2018 to 8/31/2019. Finally, there are two more contract awards related to our drill tower. The contract award is for, I'm sorry, the award goes to LJ Peolella Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $384,271. Contract provides for general contracting services for the renovation of the Montgomery County Public Safety Training Campus Drill Tower. The spec was sent, I'm sorry, accessed by 29 providers with two responses received, and the contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Number four is a contract award for an electrical contractor to Lenni Electrical Corporation in the amount of $72,990. And the contract provides for electrical contracting services for the Montgomery County Public Safety Drill Campus Drill Tower renovation. The spec was accessed by 18 providers with five responses received, and the contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And that is all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as well as the contracts on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Soltizziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comments? Any public comments?
Pauline Braccio, Talminson Township. For number 14, you said, Lee, that the list is in the back of the room, and I just went to check, and I don't see the list. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Any general public comment?
Good morning.
Hey, good morning. My name's Jim Price. I'm a county employee. I'm taking my lunch break early so I can come before you and talk. The last time I was before you, I was here to talk about climate change. During that time, the IPCC report came out, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change from the UN, that basically say that we have 12 years to avoid some of the most serious impacts of climate change. I believe since the time I came to talk, the United States government came out the report to say about the domestic impacts, financially and otherwise, on our nation as a result of not addressing climate change. What that report said was much more personal to us as a county, that by the year or over the next couple decades, we can basically face, in this section, the northeast section of the nation, $95 billion in economic damages annually. Now, that's a number. I mean, that's a huge number. What that really reflects is that we are not prepared. What that really reflects is essentially a doomsday scenario for our children, that the way of life that we now enjoy is not going to be enjoyed in any kind of capacity by them. And this isn't even a future problem. I know I sent a letter to the commissioners, and I appreciate some of that was looked at. But one of the things I mentioned in that letter is that we all know, just this past August, there were people who were trapped in their cars from flooding because of torrential downpour. Torrential downpour is the thing that is recognized as a big impact directly to this area that will only continue to grow. We know that our local townships, as long, as well as the county, is dealing with flooding issues. As much as we want to address those, those will only continue to get worse and worse and worse, to the point that all the money that we're spending to basically adapt, or excuse me, to mitigate that problem runs the risk of being overcome. This is an existential crisis, and the things I just mentioned are really drops in the bucket compared to the global impacts this will have. The issue in Syria was caused, by part, by drought. And the impacts of mitigation, the kind of unruly unrest that has caused for this nation and European nations, has been profound. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. Just recently, there is news that there is a giant hole in one of the glaciers that will indicate that. Now, I believe I get five minutes for general comment? General public?
Yes, general public.
All right, sorry. I'm, I'm, thank you. The glacier has resulted in a 4% increase in sea level rises. That is, the Arctic poles are warming faster than what they believe, what they believe the rate was going to be. And so all of the reports that we've been reading, and even the doctors and scientists are agreeing, excuse me, the scientists, that the conservative, that they're being conservative in the rate of warming. And if you want some big piece of evidence to support that, look at the polar vortex that we all just witnessed just a couple days ago. That is climate, that is cold air from the Arctic that seeped down into our nation because the jet streams are being affected due to the warming on the Arctic poles. That is only going to continue. And the amount of damage that has caused to the Midwest is really insurmountable to some extent. They haven't been able to really gauge the amount of damages that has been caused. I, I can't sit here for five minutes and talk about all of the ways we're going to be affected. What I can tell you is that we all know that this is a problem. We all know this has been a problem, and we all know that what we need to do to address it is a lot. We need to move to a zero emission economy. And that is no small feat. And that is what has caused us not to do anything, because we use greenhouse gases to warm our houses. We use them to come and to pick up our children and to go to work. We know that is an inherent part of the economy. And so, believe me when I say I join you, and I recognize that one of the reasons why we're not talking about it is because the second one of you says something about, hey, you know, we need to implement these kinds of changes, there's going to be some pushback and people recognizing that, hey, maybe that's going to cost more money. But I have to say this, yes, it's going to cost money. It's going to cost a burden to affect us. We need the time and resources. But if you're going to take that position, then the opposite position, what I'm here to tell you is, what is your plan to make sure that my children don't pay for the impacts that climate change is going to cause? What is your plan that when they have to pay more money to address all of these problems, that that's not going to come out of their pocket? And the reality is, we don't have a plan for either. I know that, I believe there's things that are being worked on, but it has been 10 years, and this right now, I'd like to just read, this is a resolution passed by this board about 10 years ago by unanimous adoption, whereas there is substantial scientific evidence that greenhouse gases released into the atmosphere are currently influencing climate change and will continue to have profound and potentially devastating local effects, including the increased risk of extreme weather events and so on. Whereas greenhouse gas reduction activities further the goals of the county's adopted comprehensive plan, including promotion of clean and efficient energy use, community production efforts, and other clean air initiatives, solid waste reduction, roll force. This was 10 years ago that this county passed a plan to institute a committee to make sure that that committee would implement the plan and would come with reports. The reason why I'm here and the reason why I'm losing my mind is that even since I've been here, I don't believe there's been one thing mentioned about climate change since those reports come on. We just had a report about the building over here. There's been no report or no update about our current plan. We have $1.5 million right now that we're looking to give out in grants as a part of Monaco 2040. I know greenhouse gas reductions is a part of Monaco 2040. Let's prioritize, let's tell our townships that if you want to get a grant to $1.5 million and a half as a part of that, make it a part of the greenhouse gas reduction. That's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
FYI, the polar vortex, the last time was in 1935, 84 years ago, so let's not get too hyper. My name is Pauline Braccio from Townesham Township, and I just want to know, and I know you're not going to answer me, but that's okay. I want to know who signed the lease for this building. The county is the tenant, not the owner, and I think if you made a bid to buy the building, you could have paid a lot less than $23 million than you are spending on the reskin. Usually, it is the owner, not a tenant, who pays for structural repair. According to the budget so carefully crafted by Dean Dorton, the county pays $46,882,437 in debt service per year. Now, under the $5 Motor Vehicle Fund section of the budget, $610,400 per year debt service is to repay a $15 million loan. And by the way, the vehicle motor fund money is not supposed to be used to be paying back loans, but anyway. Since you don't answer questions, whether written or asked here or even in a meeting, I can only extrapolate that the $46,882,437 that you're paying every year of debt service translates into about $1 billion in loans. Now, I could be off on that, but since you don't give me any more information, I don't have any other thing to go on. Regardless of how much it is, it's fiscally irresponsible. How are you collecting enough money per year to keep up the debt service? You're not. For 2019, you borrowed another $50 million. For what? To pay the debt service of $46,882,437? And then have some left over to what's in your wallets? You have not raised taxes for the past two years and just this year enacted the Family Leave Act because it is an election year. But if, God forbid, those families end up falling apart, you'll be right here, ready to strip them of everything they own. As I said, you just keep borrowing, stripping assets from residents, and stealing the support from children to pay the phenomenal debt in which you are drowning the county. In 2018, you also created the Family Justice Advisory Board, of which you, Valerie, are a member, a founding member, according to Del Richie. What is remarkable is that Gary Klein is the chair. The chair is the very person who is stealing the child support from the children. Del Richie said the board was to protect children, but who was protecting the children from the board that was established to protect the children? Gary Klein, oh wait, it's a fact that, Lee, you, and Josh, the county solicitor, and the commissioners, are all complicit by not stopping Klein's federally criminal activity of tampering with the computer and stealing child support from the children. The corruption of the commissioners and other department heads is matched by the judicial You didn't give me five minutes, did you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. In the budget, there is listed, mm, wait a minute. The Center for Judicial Integrity has given the state of Pennsylvania the grade of F- minus, and I believe that Montgomery County has the worst record in the state. Judge Patricia Kuhnehan is an egregious offender. In the budget, there is listed $364 million for the Justice Center. Someone told me it was already surpassed $400 million. The thing is, Montgomery County already spent $400 million on a justice center. It is called the State Correctional Institution Phoenix. The security issue that Judge Del Richie spoke of cannot be solved by a new center. The people involved in criminal activity come in through the parking garages. They're the people who work for the county. If you are insisting that another justice center be built, then you must not have parking garages, and the locks should be on the outside. You are such a great leader, Val, that even in the paronetary level, the clerks and someone who called herself an auditor are thieves. One such auditor tried to charge $89.25 for a copy of a docket. On the fee schedule, it is, that hangs in the paronetary office, the fee is listed as $1.75.
The paronator's office is not under the purview of the county commissioners.
It doesn't matter, it's her leadership that I'm talking about.
But she's under the paronator's office.
So, Lee, what are you going to do about the thieves in the paronetary office? According to the Montgomery County Code of Ethics, here we go, Section D, "A determination of a violation of the Code of Ethics shall become final and unappealable. In the event the commissioners conduct a review of reporting, a report finding of the COO and solicitor and make a determination that a violation has occurred, depending upon the seriousness of the violation, and employee may be reprimanded, suspended, or terminated."
Ms. Braccio, your time is up.
Okay, I'm going to quote Martin Luther King.
Ms. Braccio.
"The time is always right to do what is right, but you don't know right from wrong, and you can't tell time." Thank you.
Any other public comments? Ms. Mickman.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Elaine Mickman, and I first want to bring to your attention that the commissioners have denied in the past that the American with Disabilities Act applies to Montgomery County for any business here. And in fact, I wanted to just show you, this is your advertisement for Assistant Solicitor, and it includes responsibilities dealing with ADA, American with Disabilities Act, and it also includes representing the county with Domestic Relations Office at child support contempt hearings. So you do have authority in those areas. Next, I would like to bring up that my family suffered a loss of life as a result and domino effect due to the commissioners' lack of oversight of the Domestic Relations Office Director who did tamper with the--
Ms. Mickman, you've been told repeatedly--
Excuse me--
--the Domestic Relations Office is under the judiciary branch.
If you're going to talk, you stop the clock.
Yeah, excuse me--
If you're going to talk, you stop the clock.
Ms. Braccio.
You stop, and now do you stop the clock?
This is a clear violation of Sunshine Act by you, you know, preventing me from speaking.
Ms. Mickman, you are allowed to speak, but you must keep your comments germane to the business of the county commissioners.
Yes. I am a resident of the county, therefore actions and business that are impacting me are germane. I am germane to this county, so you--
And no one denies that, Ms. Mickman. However, the comments must be reserved to business--
Okay, well, the Domestic Relations Director--
--before the commissioners or may come before the county commissioners.
The Domestic Relations Director is hired by the county commissioners, so just stop denying it.
That is not, that is not actually the case. Please keep your comments germane to the business of the county commissioners.
This county is inflicting child suffrage and is exercising age discrimination against minor children by implementing excessive fees to deny indigent parents court access. The Domestic Relations Director, who is hired by the commissioners' office or commissioners, closed my minor child's child support. And then, when I went to file for any recourse I did, I could, the paronator's office was trying to charge me a fee that does not exist. I happen to have a copy of the fee list, and they were trying to charge me money so they can line their own pockets. So those employees at the paronatory office, I am well aware that many of them are county employees. Therefore, the commissioners do have a duty to oversee that. I'd like to bring up the fact that while the court system is denying, rubber-stamp denying fee waivers for people to file matters in court, and nobody else has taken any initiative to do anything about it, whether it's the commissioners' office with these fees, the commissioners funded $70,000 to free legal aid in December where, for custody matters, when they don't do custody matters, they only do landlord. Therefore, you should have appropriated those $70,000 of funds to the paronatory, therefore they'd have money available for fee waivers for people. But the commissioners are denying their ability to address any connection to the court, regardless that they're directly linked with operating a family court forfeiture scheme. And there's money being funneled through all the computer systems, they're giving out preferential treatment to certain people, and it's interesting that Commissioner Lawrence had mentioned that they were seeking to assist, and they were concerned with homelessness, yet this entire county has worked with each other to try and do everything possible to make me and my children homeless. There are federal crimes that are being committed here, and as Commissioner Gale stated, yeah, there's too many people who are catering to the contributors, and many of them are adverse to me. So again, elections are coming, and I'd appreciate Mr. Solicitor not interrupting. Again, he's in violation of the Sunshine Act. I brought all issues that are germane to this county. Nothing's been settled, and--
Ms. Mickman, your time is up.
Yeah, and just be advised, you're all being reported for unethical at the Ethics Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Snidgess, for purposes of educating the public, could you please just briefly review how the paronator's office runs and also the difference between the commissioners' office and the courts?
Absolutely. The, under the Pennsylvania county system, there are independently elected row officers. They are each independent offices. While the county is required to provide funds for those in the budget, those offices are each run by those elected officials, and the county commissioners have no oversight of the way that those offices are operated, and the employees of those offices are under the discretion and operations of those elected row officers. So paronator's employees are employees of the paronator's office. Separate and apart, obviously, in Pennsylvania, in most of the country, you have independent offices of government, including the executive and most specifically the judiciary branch. Judiciary branch is a separate and different part of government, and the county commissioners have no authority over any part of the court system.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to point out that there is--
Ms. Mickman, this is not--
--a bad advisory committee, so now you've all joined forces together. And the commissioners do have a duty--
Ms. Mickman, this is not public comment.
--to report a crime, to know something about it within the county.
And what about the Montgomery--
Is there any other public comments? All right. Hearing none. Any closing commissioners' comments? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand.
Thank you. Laura Lehman, and I'm from Addington Township, where we have more than our share of things going on that have been going on for a long time and getting worse. And the issues throughout really are ethics and citizen access to government. I do understand that there is no obligation to do anything but provide records and that you don't have to answer questions. We need questions answered. So those particular laws that you don't have to do anything but provide records and you don't need to answer questions actually come from legislation that came from the legislators, which is this group right in front of me. So we're asking that you begin to consider legislating so that we actually have access to our government, that when there are ethics problems, when there are misunderstandings, when there are any of those things going on, that we actually have a solution for them. In our particular, oh, and let me just add on that, on the tail of that, that we also need a reporting system countywide and township to township. We need individual township reporting systems. So you can set the model here, that when people have complaints, they can see how many people have complaints. I had the same complaints with the paronator's office. And if you provide funds for the paronator's office, no matter what your level of oversight is, you're in charge of those funds that you provide. So that becomes a county issue. And this constantly pointing the finger, it's not me, it's somebody else's job to do, is what we have to stop, because that's not serving the residents. And you are here to serve the residents. So I think a comment was made in an earlier meeting that the $400 million, you know, could be spent improving those systems, and I agree. I agree. I think, I agree with Commissioner Gale on the price of it and the fact that we are way out of line with that, but I also think we need to consider about how we are spending money. So there's a navigator when I call. I one time was trying to get the paronatory. I was passed to so many people, I finally picked somebody in an absolutely obtuse office who would talk to me, okay? And she finally got me to somebody who I could actually register. Never got to the paronatory. The paronatory never got back to me, no matter how many messages I left. So we have problems with this system, and it's not okay to bounce it off that it's somebody else's problem, okay? You are our government. If we have a problem, it's up to you to legislate for us. And we are rarely told what that method of legislation is. How do we approach you to be able to say, we need this law, or we need this law changed? So one law we need changed is when I drive, you know, maybe an hour, an hour and a half on the road to get here, and I wait through a meeting that can be anywhere from one to three hours typically, five minutes is not enough to speak. So I'm going to just touch briefly on some of the other topics that I have with this county, and I'd like to know before I sit down, who's going to work with me so we can do something about those issues? This is really important, okay? So we do need a reporting system. In our township, we have somebody who operated so unethically, it caused, it triggered a grand jury investigation. It was about a contractor and an apartment building and the way that was being done, and the public officials who looked the other way for years while the contracting was going on. And literally, that particular person who violated, he's a commissioner in our township, my commissioner by chance, violated every single rule, law, code that you could imagine, and he, in the middle of that, with everybody's knowledge, was appointed chair of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, which he was just reappointed to. And all of you, I think, probably know the details of that. If you don't, you should know who you're hiring and who's in charge of your various departments. We have, in our township, for instance, we've talked about bids before, we had contractors that felt very comfortable bidding $3,000. I know, so let me just finish this list since I did drive here.
You have five, you're limited to five minutes.
So they felt comfortable bidding $3,000 on appraisal contracts. $500 to $600 is a normal appraisal.
We try to make sure that everyone's treated equally here.
So I have several other things I was going to hit just briefly.
And I recommend that you mail those.
It's not, five minutes is not okay, and that's the first thing I'd like to change. So could somebody please answer? How do we get that changed first and then deal with some of these other things? How do we do that? Can you please answer for me?
You can leave your contact information with Ms. Amodeo, and someone will follow up with you.
Who will follow up with me?
We'll make a determination about the person who's best able to answer all of your questions.
So you're not volunteering to follow up with me?
Please leave your contact information with Ms. Amodeo. She's right there.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? All right. Then, we will move to closing commissioners' comments. All right. Then I will announce that our next meeting will be held on February 21, 2019, and take a motion to adjourn the February 7, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gale, second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments or public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And Mr. Landauer, we invite you to the desk for Salary Board. Good morning, Ms. Perdue.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, February 6, 2019, with a timestamp of 1:00 PM. Of note, we have five retirees. Mary Beth Delaney from adult probation after 40 years. Carol Levin from the Controller's Office after 10 years. Gregory Huddyman from District Justice after 15 years. Christine Bolinsky from juvenile probation after 27 years. And Thomas D. Ferdinand from juvenile probation after 35 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the February 7, 2019, Salary Board presentation is given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Mr. Landauer?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Any general public comment on Salary Board? All right, hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn the February 7, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board.
So moved.
Under, second by Commissioner--
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.